At this time, I'll call to order the Tuesday, October 17th, 2017, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, if you would join us in a moment of silent prayer or reflection, and I'd ask that you keep uppermost in your thoughts those of our fellow countrymen in California, and Texas, and Florida, and Puerto Rico, and Mississippi, and Alabama, who have been dealing with the consequences of floods, and fires, and hurricanes. So if you'll please bow your heads with us.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the authority for which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, would you please review any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we had one adjustment to the agenda that was handled at the pre-agenda meeting, and that was under closed session. That was an economic development item. That was General Statute Reference 143-318, 11A6. And not an adjustment, but a clarification under Administrative Matters under Item 8.1. We have a date of October 17th, 2017. Need to change that to November 7th, 2017.
Just a correction, I believe that economic development reference was A4, and the personnel was A6.
Apologize.
Okay, as the adjustment has been summarized and amended, any motions to adopt the agenda?
Most to the vote.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Agenda is adopted, as adjusted. We do have, do want to take some time this evening to just share a little bit about a special month, and I'd last ask Commissioner Haupt if he would tee this up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to remind everybody that October is Cancer Awareness Month, and I wanted everybody to keep the Edwards family in their thoughts and prayers after a courageous and inspirational fight having gained an angel this weekend, Dalton Edwards. And I know cancer's touched a lot of families, it's touched mine, and I just wanted to remind everybody to keep all your family and friends in your prayers this month since it's Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. We all know someone who's been touched in families, or friends, and neighbors, and we were making progress in defeating that disease. At this time, we have a request from the Central Illinois Council of Governments for support of a grant application. Is Blair Israel here tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't see Blair come in.
Okay, well, this resolution is sponsored by Commissioner McNeely, and I will read it into the record. It's a resolution of support for Central Illinois Mobility Management and Volunteer Transportation Services, where North Carolina Department of Transportation FY19 Grant Application. And whereas Article 2B of Chapter 136 of the North Carolina General Statutes, and the Governor of North Carolina have designated the North Carolina Department of Transportation as the agency responsible for administering federal and state public transportation funds, and whereas the North Carolina Department of Transportation Public Transportation Division has principal authority and responsibility to administer funds from the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration, and whereas it is in the interest of local government to improve mobility for seniors and individuals with disabilities by removing barriers to transportation services and expanding the transportation mobility options available in rural and small urbanized areas of North Carolina, and whereas the Central Illinois Council of Governments has worked in concert with the North Carolina Department of Transportation to provide a mobility management program for the nine-county region to increase regional coordination and develop volunteer transportation services to improve services for elderly individuals, individuals with disabilities, and veterans. And whereas the Central Council, Central Illinois Council of Governments has coordinated with the transit agencies during regional mobility management activities, and whereas no separate funds are being requested from Iredell County to help implement this project. Now for, I ask for a motion to support this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt this resolution in support.
Motion by Commissioner Haupt, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A opposed like sign, motion carries unanimously. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Iredell County Board of Commissioners hereby supports Central Illinois's funding proposal to the North Carolina Department of Transportation to improve transportation mobility for seniors, individuals with disabilities, and veterans. Adopted this 17th day of October, 2017. Moving on now to public hearings. We have three public hearings this evening, so everyone knows, you've had an opportunity to sign up. And when we call your name, if you'd please come forward and say your name again, and your address, and be sure to speak into the microphone so everyone can hear, and the people in TV land can hear you as well. And if there's anyone that has missed an opportunity to sign up, that does want to be heard, you will have that opportunity. Our first public hearing is a request from the Planning and Development Department to consider a request by the Town of Mooresville to release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction of five parcels to the Town of Mooresville. And Mr. Matthew Todd, if you could please tee this up for everyone.
The first ETJ request we have tonight has, is five parcels outlined in blue or cross-hatched on the screen. It does create a donut hole with two parcels that you could see on the screen that would stay with the county's jurisdiction if approved, while the blue hatch would go with the Town of Mooresville zoning and subdivision jurisdiction. This map shows the RA in white, which is county residential zoning. The cross-hatched in the red is Mooresville, while there is some commercial county zoning right there at the corner with Rocky River, which is neighborhood business existing. This is just a land use plan of the area showing a rural commercial node. We do have the outstanding rezoning case that does encompass one of the parcels that's being questioned for release. That's approximately 22 acres, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions on this one.
Mr. Todd, the parcels that are in question here, all five of these parcels front Shears Road, and they are directly across the street from the food line, is that correct?
That is correct.
Any other questions, comments? As you mentioned, there is a pending rezoning request before this board for one of those pieces of property that is currently scheduled to be heard at the next board meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there any other questions, comments? Yeah, I would. Officially, I would open the public hearing. There is no one that has signed up for this particular public hearing. I would inquire if anyone would like to be heard. Okay, sir, if you'd please.
I was to sign up with Ron Walmsley. Can I sign up down there?
Okay, and your name, sir?
Randy Erwin.
Okay. Mr. Erwin, if you could come up to the podium. And if you could just announce your name and address for the record.
My name is Randy Erwin, 175 Owens Farm Road in Mooresville, North Carolina.
Okay. Mr. Erwin, you have a total of five minutes, and the floor is yours.
First of all, I own the biggest blue area around the four white parcels. I just purchased that three years ago. Didn't have any idea this was a 2030 plan. Never got the first piece of lead or anything. I come up here a couple of weeks ago, and they were trying to sell that, two of the first properties up there in blue, to a Dollar General, and that's the first I found out about a 2030 plan. Well, on the backside of this, where the last one is down on the bottom, my daughter built a house there. My other daughter was fixing to build a house up here, right behind the Evening Shade up there where I own that in the blue. So I'm wondering what that's going to do to me, because I have a farm of 35 acres there, and what's that going to do to me if my daughter wants to build up there next Eve, still build next Evening Shade, and what it's going to do to my taxes since I'm in the farm program. About y'all taking, about Mooresville taking over that.
Mr. Todd, do you want to address that in terms of?
The, if the property is released, to pull any permits in any of the blue cross-hatch, at that point, all those would have to go through Mooresville. So a zoning permit would be issued to the town. Anyone in that area would have to meet their standards on what those setbacks are, any requirements for accessory buildings. Any land use decision at that point does go through Mooresville. Building permits, regardless of the county or Mooresville, they would still be issued through the county. As far as tax deferment, my understanding is that that would not change. He would be able to keep his tax deferment, but I can't answer any specific questions with how Mooresville would treat a farm that's in their ETJ. I know there could be some differences there as far as the exemption with zoning versus what the town has.
I guess the big question people ask typically, as Mr. Erwin did, is unless you're annexed, what this would do if this, if these parcels are released by this board to the Mooresville jurisdiction, they have a 60-day timeframe or so to establish zoning for those parcels. Until, and if you're annexed, your taxes should remain the same, because you would still be in the county tax district. You would not be in Mooresville's tax authority unless you're annexed in. Correct?
That's correct.
I think that's what he was looking at.
I have one more question also. If all of this is in blue, whilst the two houses on Evening Shade there, and the two houses at 157, and the other one up there, all four of those not in this blue area, why, I mean, why do you just pick and choose which ones that you do?
That's, that was a Mooresville decision. I think it does have somewhat to do with some of our code requirements. If they kept it under five parcels, that was part of their request, there's a different requirement. They don't have to have a public meeting. If they'd gone over that five parcel limit, then they would have had to have held a public meeting for those affected property owners. But again, that's just a Mooresville decision. They identified the parcels that they wanted to request, and those are the five that made the list. I'm sure it's based on the road frontage being across from the existing city limits with the existing food line there, but again, that was just a decision Mooresville made.
Mr. Erwin, I'd like to address your concerns on taxes for just a second. My family's farm has been in the ETJ of Mooresville for over 20 years, and I've watched that pretty closely. Just the mere fact of being in the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction does not affect the taxes is what's levy there. Now, when you get annexed in, yes, you're going to notice that. Or if zoning gets changed, you will notice an increase in your taxes, but just merely being in the ETJ, ETJ does not affect it. As best I have been able to glean over the past 20 years, and I've watched that pretty closely. Now, as far as a bona fide farm, if you're in present use value, you're taking a farm exemption. As long as you meet those farm exemptions, then you qualify for the tax deferment. Our family farm has done that, and yes, it has qualified for it. So I can, I can address that. As far as those five parcels, we've just been talking about the five parcels that fronted on Shears Road across the street from the food line. And yes, it has created a donut hole, but when we, I guess, we instructed staff, and when we discussed it with Mooresville, because we've been in this ongoing discussion for over a year with Mooresville about how we're going to handle ETJ releases and stuff, I guess we just didn't make it plain that we didn't want a donut hole. But nevertheless, that, when the requests come in, we have to deal with it as it is requested. Where are you talking about the creating, building new homes? Is that in the donut hole, or the two pieces closer to Owens?
At the end of Evening Shade, that blue, blue place at the end, in the Evening Shade there, in that little corner.
Is that down, down Evening Shade where the log cabin is?
Yeah, the log cabin is here. There's a double wide, right here is where they were planning on building that right there.
As this piece of legislation is presented to us tonight, it would not change the building of those two houses. You would still be under county zoning sphere of influence, and you would still deal with all the county standards on those two pieces of, those two parcels.
Okay, I mean, I know why they want this whole thing, because there's a 74-foot right away comes around into Rocky River. So they've been talking about that road for years, so they want to come in right there with a road, and, but I just don't understand why they don't, you know, why they don't take the whole thing if they're going to do that. I just.
And I guess that was per our instructions, that we asked them to address the properties that actually fronted on Shears Road, and legally and technically, those two don't front. So, so I guess that's, that's where that came in. And typically, we try not to create donut holes like that, because it's better for uniformity throughout, but this particular time, that's, that's what happened on that. And yes, I believe you're correct. I believe, I believe that you will see in the future right of ways being secured, and plans being drawn, and all that for, for some type of connector road there. I personally believe that's a long ways down the line, though. That's going to be.
Well, how do we get somebody in this thing to, like, send out letters to people that, you know, that, I didn't even know there was a 2030 rule until the last time I come up here, the last meeting for the Dollar General. I mean, you send it out for somebody that's attached to it, but why don't they send you something to let you know you're in the 2030 plan? And I had no idea I was in a 2030 plan there.
Yeah, all of that's dictated by state statutes as to what, what is necessary to send out notices on, and I can't remember when the 2030 plan was adopted, but it's been years ago, and I guess that, it is probably was before you owned the piece of property, to be quite frank.
Yeah, that, I guess that was my question when it happened, so. 2009, okay. That's far farther than, okay. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Erwin. I'll inquire if there's anyone else that would like to be heard on this particular matter. This is on the Shears Road ETJ release.
My name is Janice Carricker, and I live at 1332 Shears Road. And about this releasing from the county to the city, I personally have mixed feelings about this. My house is the one, of course, that is up for sale, but like I said, I have mixed feelings because my fear is that at some point in time, that my house would be annexed, and I really don't want that, because I cannot afford for my taxes to go up. That's just one big thing, and I know that the DOT has looked at the road, the traffic is at times horrible, and I know, I know the connector road is to go through exactly when. I have no idea, maybe five, 10 years down the road, but like I said, I was hoping we need a restaurant, something down there that way. Everything is going to this, you know, the middle of the city, out to Lake Norman, and I would really hope that we would get more things on that end of town. But like I said, my fear is that it would be annexed, and I just cannot afford that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Your name again?
Carricker.
Carricker. Okay.
Ms. Carricker, can I address one thing before you walk away from the podium? The, as far as the taxes going up, I want you to understand that merely releasing ETJ to the Town of Mooresville does not trigger your taxes to go up. Now, if it were to be annexed, or the zoning were to be changed, yes, it would, but that's not what's a part of this piece of legislation tonight.
Thank you. I would inquire if there's anyone else that'd like to be heard. Seeing and hearing none, I will close this public hearing, and are there any comments or further questions from the board? Is there a motion that would like to be proffered?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would offer a motion this evening that, to approve the release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the Town of Mooresville on these five tracts of property. And the reasons for that, that support it are the fact that this is identified as a commercial node in our 2030 Horizon Plan, and that, and that it would be consistent with what our zoning ordinance says, and I feel like that, I feel like that, that the property around this area, around this food line, would be better served under Mooresville's jurisdiction, because they have a slightly more restrictive zoning ordinance than we do.
Motion by Commissioner Bowles to approve the release of the ETJ. Is there any comment?
I'd like to consider tabling that. We've got the rezoning already on the agenda for next meeting, and I'd maybe like to consider tabling this decision until the next meeting date, so we can make both those decisions maybe in the same night, since we, since we have the other, the rezoning issue for that other piece on November 7th. Maybe we could consider both of those on the same evening.
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with that. If you'd like for me to rescind my motion, and you make a motion to continue it, I have no problem with that.
Well, we can table the motion for two weeks. We've closed the public hearing, but we can, the motion then, as amended, is to table the matter for two weeks, or until our next meeting.
Sure.
That's, that's November the 7th.
Does he need to rescind?
Any further discussion?
Okay.
All in favor, place a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A opposed like sign. Motion to continue is passed unanimously. We'll take that back up on November the 7th. Thank you all. The second public hearing is a request from our Planning and Development Department to conduct a public hearing to consider a request by South Iredell Community Development Corporation to release zoning and subdivision jurisdiction of 16.124 acres to the Town of Mooresville. And Mr. Todd, if you could please share with us the details on this request.
This request is outlined in blue on the screen. You can see it's essentially surrounded by Mooresville jurisdiction in the crosshatched red area. It's a long skinny piece, approximately just over 16 acres, currently owned by South Iredell Community Development Corporation. They are the applicant, and Chris Younger can potentially add some details about the proposed use of this site. But again, this is just a release of the zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the Town of Mooresville.
Mr. Younger, would you share what you can about the proposed use?
Good evening, thank you, Chairman. The 16.124 acres that you see outlined in blue, we're asking for a release of jurisdiction to the Town of Mooresville, so that it can then be rezoned with the Town of Mooresville, and then almost immediately transferred to Niagara Bottling for their, for their future expansion of their company. Niagara Bottling currently backs up to this property. This 16 acre was, in essence, kind of being held for Niagara for future development. At this time, they are looking to expand their building. They will expand it into that property by, not very much at all. Actually, will not need the full acreage, but they will be required to buy the full acreage. They will expand into it slightly with the building, and then the majority of their use for it, which would be a small amount, will be to take their driveway around that building and potentially have some auxiliary parking. At the time, right now, the parking is not a definite issue, or not a definite item in their plans, but the driveway is. And so that's why we are asking for a release of jurisdiction from the county, so that Mooresville can rezone this for the project.
Can you kind of indicate the area that they would be developing, and the areas that they would, don't have any actual plans?
Niagara pretty much backs up right here currently, and their, their driveway goes around the building and around this way. They would be backing, they would be extending their building about additional 44,000 feet, and coming right up to the line, possibly coming over just a little bit, and so that driveway will have to then come around the new part of the building and around to the, this side over here. The rest of this property over here, here, and all this, at this time, there's no plans to even do anything with it all, will remain untouched, you know, just become part of their property that they own now. That property in the shape that it is now, it's not feasible for them to come in and take a block of this out, and then ever have a very much of a viable use for that. So that's the project right now, and it's staged where it's at, and that's, that's all Niagara wants is for us to extend into a little bit, and this property has been held for their benefit until they were ready to expand.
Okay. Are there any questions for either Mr. Todd or Mr. Younger?
Mr. Younger, that, this ETJ release only relates to that one tract of property, is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
And that track of property is owned by Mooresville South Iredale Economic Development Corporation?
Correct.
And will be bought by Niagara?
Correct. Once it is transferred over and rezoned, actually, when we transfer it over, we will have a land purchase agreement with them in place here shortly, and Niagara will purchase that property from us, and the rezoning should occur, and then they can expand into the property.
Further questions or comments? Now open the public hearing, and we have, one individual has signed up, Mr. Jody Brown. Ms. Jody Brown? Ms. Gav, could you turn the clock?
Hi, my name is Jody Brown. My address is 303 Browns Rank Drive. I am down Mount Ala Highway from what they're addressing. Any of you that grew up here, it's the Browns Rank property and home place. My family's basically that whole hill. My father wasn't able to come tonight, so I'm here to speak for us. I'll be pretty short and sweet. I apologize for not contacting you each individually, which is what I would have done had I known the meeting was occurring before four o'clock yesterday afternoon. I want to say thank you, and I'm not kissing up, I want to say thank you to Matthew with the planning board and to Amy yesterday for trying to assist me in any way that they could and give me all the information they could in a very short period of time. So I do appreciate that. That said, I come before you tonight, and I have one purpose, and that purpose is to ask you, actually, that purpose is to beg you not to release control of this piece of land. I think it does set a precedent. I've been told it doesn't. We've been told a lot of things about this industrial park. Our quality of life has been affected dramatically, and people say, well, you know, you buy beside of an industrial park, you live beside of an industrial park, suck it up. Well, an industrial park bought out the cows' house. The cows lived there when my family came there. In fact, the cows probably weren't even there yet when my family came there. So no, we didn't buy there. No, we didn't look at like the folks over in Concord that buy the big houses beside the racetrack and then go, they're being noisy, not the situation. This was thrust upon us. We've been told many things by various people that were untrue about this development down there. We've elected each of you, and I can honestly say that I think I voted for y'all. I know I voted for most of you. Did my research really good, so. That said, you're my voice. You're our voice. We elected you to be our voice because we felt that you are empathetic. You're in the county. You're not in the city. You understand us a little more, and we have a voice, and honestly, we can vote you out, we can vote you in. If this is transferred to Mooresville, like many other things have been, we're fighting Mooresville, or we're discussing with Mooresville. Those folks have no reason to give me five minutes to speak to them. They have no reason whatsoever because I can't vote for them. Do not get me wrong, we do not want to be annexed. We will lose our family land if we're annexed. Can't afford it, which makes me want to cry. Anyway, my time is running out. I beg of you, please stand up and be our voice. That's why I got off work and voted for you guys. That's why I got off work and came to talk to you guys, and I would have called you all, and I'd have given you all kinds of numbers and all kinds of scenarios in a little more than five minutes, but I didn't know about the meeting, and I didn't have that time, and I didn't have that luxury. And it's not your fault. You did everything legally. Everything was done that was supposed to be done, but I don't read the legal notices. Maybe I guess I should. I'm begging you. We put you here to hear us, and you're hearing me right now. If you let go of this piece of property, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to anything he said. They don't have to answer to me. The South Iredale Development Corporation has not told us the truth in the past. That's great, but they could turn around tomorrow and sell that to a gravel factory, and it wouldn't be illegal, and it wouldn't even be immoral. I need for you guys to understand that this is not a business deal. This is our life, and that we trusted y'all with our life when we voted for you. I'm not trying to be dramatic, and this is how I feel about it. I'm passionate about my home. I can tell you the names of the trees, and if that's crazy, then I'm crazy. Some of them are 800 years old. They deserve a name. Please protect us. Please give us a voice. Please don't do this. I'm begging, and I don't beg real easy. Mr. Bowles can tell you. I thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there anyone else that cares to be heard on the matter related to the ETJ release request by South Iredale Community Development Corporation? Close the public hearing, and I'll open it up for comment or questions from the board.
Chris, is there a timeframe on this that needs to be done tonight? Or as far as the release consideration, does that put a burden on anyone for us to have a couple of weeks to consider this?
It will delay the project another few weeks. The time that they need to be able to come in there and break ground, do some grading to make it at building elevation, is critical for them to get started sooner than later so it will be ready for construction of the building expansion portion, hopefully by May to June in that area. We did have a couple of delays already of two weeks, once on this already, and so that's got them behind schedule even further. As far as being critical, it's probably something that could be worked out. The company, the way they have their construction schedule now with us is set according to getting approved tonight for this ROJ. We did do their public hearing on their incentives several weeks ago, and this portion of land was talked about as far as being part of that project. So as far as it being critical, that gets done tonight to keep it on schedule with the company, I would say it is critical. And to keep it on schedule with zoning, rezoning, public hearing with the town of Mooresville, if it's not approved tonight, that will delay that hearing as well. So there's a public hearing set up for that currently right now. The date is, it will either be, I think we have November 20th or December 4th. November 20th is the proposed date.
What I'm concerned about is we have a even board tonight, and so if we have a two-to-two tie, then that puts us in a little dilemma if we make a motion to approve it or deny it. That's why I was thinking about making the motion to table it. I just was concerned about that.
If it were to advance the cause to get the release of jurisdiction done to table it, then we would go by your guidance on that and definitely abide by that and be in favor of it. If further discussion needs to be made on this property, its use, or where it's going to go, and any assurances that need to be made, we'd be happy to do that as well. Talk with anyone who opposes the ROJ. We could talk with them about the project and what we have in place to make sure that it will proceed forward as planned.
I think, from my perspective, some more consideration would be helpful for me, and I think maybe if you had the opportunity to talk to some neighbors and make sure that they're aware of what part of the property, if approved, would be utilized and not resold for things that would be detrimental to their property values or uses that they currently have. Hopefully, that would make a easier decision for us. You know, as we've talked many times before, the tough decisions we make are the release of ETJs because these people are our constituents that, until they're annexed or if they're annexed, they have no voice with the municipality or town. So we take that, this board I know takes that pretty seriously. So that would be my suggestion, is to consider tabling it until we have a full board and have a little more time and give these guys an opportunity to speak with the neighbors or whatever.
Make that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion. We table it till November 7th.
Any further discussion, comments? Motion by Commissioner Howt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Brown, I'd encourage you to get additional information from staff and from South Iredale Development Corporation so you can understand exactly what it is they plan to do with this property and understand that we're, we have to weigh out, you know, considerations of what's going to bring jobs to Iredale County so that people can have a decent living and be able to have the quality of life that we enjoy while we are rooted in our past. And you look at the Mizeppa community, and that is indeed very rooted in our past and a very important community and sense of community to maintain. So we never want to do anything that is going to be injurious to what makes Iredale County Iredale County, which is those small communities where our pioneer values originated from, where they decided not to cut down those seven or 800-year-old trees. So anyway, just share a little more information, you know, and I'm sure that Niagara would be happy to share your information about what their plans are to address any concerns that you may have or many, any changes they might, you know, use to ameliorate any of those concerns.
They definitely would. We appreciate and thank you for your time tonight, but we do look forward to reassuring Ms. Brown about the plans for the project.
Thank you.
Now we move on to our third public hearing of the evening, which is a public hearing to address an amendment to the Iredale County Code of Ordinances and the Iredale County Personnel Ordinance to include carrying concealed as defined in North Carolina General Statutes 114-269 subsection A. Just to kick it off, let me just say that this public hearing is not designed for a decision this evening on the proposed carrying a concealed weapon ordinance for county employees. It is part of a lengthy and deliberative process that was begun over two years ago to examine how we best provide a safe and secure environment for the employees of this county, which include both active and passive measures and a full range of measures, some of which have already been implemented. And to give you a little bit of detail on that, I'd like to ask Commissioner Howt, who as one of the two members, along with Commissioner McNeely, serves on our general government task force. Just so you know, we have some strategic objectives and missions and visions for this county, and we've divided up among all of the commissioners, two apiece, five areas of emphasis that we have. One is economic development, the other is education, and there's public safety and justice, public health and well-being, and then general government, which deals with intergovernmental relations as well as our internal government functions. So I'd ask Commissioner Howt if he could share a little bit of context on how we've approached this whole issue of safety and security for our employees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of our general government task force, the county manager, our HR department, our attorneys, our deputy county manager, and other staff members, you know, our goal is our Iredale County Personnel Ordinance is to establish a policy that promotes a safe environment for our employees to function and work and to provide services for our end users. This process, as you said, started over two years ago, implementing proactively changes in county buildings, you know, from free access to all of our facilities by the public without staff members allowing them into certain areas, camera systems, various other situations. This is not just about, you know, concealed carry. So tonight, we wanted to hear from the public about this potential policy that we would implement, that would allow our employees, if it passes, to carry concealed weapons. I wanted to kind of lead into some changes that the task force, working with all these various people, the sheriff and the sheriff's office and things also. Like I said, it's over a two-year process, but this is specifically more involving the concealed carry potential. The changes to the personnel ordinance would be to the people must abide by all federal, state, local concealed carry laws. They must be in good standing with all federal, state, and local laws. Must notify human resources of your intention to carry. Must attend mandatory annual training provided by Iredale County, which we would require additional training above and beyond what's required by the state of North Carolina's existing concealed carry laws, and that training would be on an annual basis as well. Must consent to and accept all liability if the act outside of concealed carry laws. Firearms must be on the person locked in a vehicle or locked in a compartment that is permanently affixed to your office. Firearm must be taken with you when you leave the county property. Must consent to additional background checks. Can't bring a weapon to any disciplinary or grievance meeting. Changes to the county code, it would restrict weapons that the public can carry to only those allowed by the concealed carry statute. The timeline, like I said, we've been working on this approximately two years. Management and the board of commissioners began that process to improve the security measures for employees and our end users. Within the last year, security audits have been performed on each building by the sheriff's office. These audits produced recommended changes to facilities to improve security, such as controlled access points, as I mentioned, giving employees the ability to internally lock offices. These recommendations have been included in our budget, and some have been already completed. Each employee receive active shooter training within the last year. The board requested that in additional action, we discuss amended the ordinance to allow employees to carry the concealed carry as we're discussing tonight. The list of recommendations from the safety audit is all facilities have radio coverage, installation of bidirectional antennas, all staff and volunteers should wear ID badges in our facilities, building standards and fire marshal's office, the doors need to be lockable from the inside without a key. Addition of a few cameras and monitors where the central permitting staff can observe what's occurring in the parking lot. The ag center, none of the doors are able to be locked from inside. Consider putting some type of alarms on the exit doors so that employees know when someone is entering or exiting. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, this is a long process. It's a deliberative process for us to consider. The general government task force, along with staff, the sheriff's office, HR, many others, put a lot of time with our attorneys to potentially consider an amendment to allow our employees in the buildings that would be allowable. Not all county buildings would be applicable because they share offices with state or other federal offices also. So I'm going to ask our deputy county manager, Beth Jones, to go over our policy that we've come up with as what we think is a good final draft for us, this board, to consider at a later date. And after the public hearing tonight, my goal was to ask you guys and the county manager to get some feedback from all staff members that would be able to use this policy if it was, if it would, were to be implemented.
All right. Ms. Jones, if you could provide any additional details that have not already been covered, let's say, by Commissioner Howt?
Commissioner Howt was very thorough with what he went over. I just want to remind the board that there would be additions to two different ordinances, and that's what the public hearing is for, to get comment on that. The first ordinance would be the Iredale County Code of Ordinances, which addresses the public, and that would be an ordinance that would basically, we would amend the ordinance, that would say that weapons are prohibited on county property with the exception of. So, and the exception of would be the concealed carry, and we would refer back to the concealed carry statute. So that is the first ordinance, which addresses the public carrying in our facilities. Again, it goes right back to the North Carolina General Statute regarding concealed carry and excludes the certain facilities that Commissioner Howt detailed. The second ordinance is the Iredale County Personnel Ordinance, and that is, that addresses employees in county facilities carrying concealed. So those are the two differences, and it's two different ordinances. One is for the public, and the other addresses the One is for the public and the other addresses the employees on county property.
Ms. Jones, if I could just ask you to clarify for everyone's benefit. The current law allows any citizen to carry a weapon on county property, carrying a concealed or open carry.
Currently, right now, Aridale County does not have an ordinance or anything that prohibits the general public from carrying any weapons on county property. Okay, so, we do have a personnel ordinance, which governs employees, and our personnel ordinance currently says that employees cannot have any weapons of any kind on county property. So, basically, there's an unlevel, an uneven playing field because the general public can come into our facilities, they can carry concealed, they can actually carry open carry as well because we don't have any policy or any ordinance prohibiting that. But we do have a policy that prohibits employees. So, what this will do is bring parity to both the general public and the employees. It, what it will do, it will tighten up slightly what the public can bring in, which allows the concealed carry, but does not allow open carry, does not allow any other type of weapon. So, it sets very clearly what the policy is regarding what the public can bring into our facilities, and it also states very clearly what the employees can.
And could you, I'm not sure if you have the requirements for a carrying concealed weapon permit, but they include a background check and training for any citizen. Is that correct?
Anyone that wishes to carry concealed has to follow North Carolina General Statutes. They have to make application, they go through a thorough background check, they're thoroughly vetted, they, it's approved by the sheriff in each local county, and they have to go through a training class. They have to go through qualifying to learn how to shoot and discharge the weapon. That concealed carry is good for five years, and then it's renewed. And they have to go through the background check process again every five years for that.
And there are no training requirements or background checks required for open carry? Is that correct?
Correct. That is correct.
All right, any other comments?
I just wanted to re-implement, and that's what the general government task force and staff did with, along with the sheriff's office, Andy Petit and the sheriff and others. Is we would do the annual training. We would go above and beyond what the state requires for concealed carry, for additional training through the sheriff's office, using a licensed instructor. So, and our training would be annual to remind the employees. We would have one open enrollment per year and have one training cycle annually for employees that may be interested. And that was one reason I think it would be important for us to allow all of our staff that would be in these facilities to give our county manager and assistant managers some feedback as to the policy that we're considering and how that affects them and what their thoughts are. But we wanted them to understand that we've gone a step above and beyond, you know, safety, any safety measures required by the state to require additional training and all of those measures for our county employees.
Any further comments at this point? I'd like to make just a few comments, just to provide a little bit of broader context as far as, you know, why we are looking at this as a possible new personnel policy. Everyone is, I'm sure, well aware of the instances of mass shootings that have occurred in recent past, as well as, you know, just over the last ten years, some of which are terrorism connected, some of which are the acts of individuals who are mentally ill or not rational. We've taken as many steps as I think we can passively to try to provide a safe and secure physical environment, but we have older buildings that are not necessarily designed with, you know, limited access in mind. And likewise, as you limit access, you also create some concerns concerning fire hazards and the ability of being able to get out of buildings. So, we've had training with our staff concerning what the actions to do, appropriate actions upon an active shooter to, just basically to get out of the area, to seek a safe and secure place. But if you are not able to get out of an area, if you are caught in the midst of a group, as, for instance, the county employees that were killed in San Bernardino in December of 2015, then the evidence seems to point to the fact that if you have an active shooter, then the best way to limit mass casualties is to have someone who is a reactive shooter, who can, if not eliminate the threat, can disrupt that threat and give people time to escape or give time for other people to overpower that individual or give time for the police or the sheriff's department and other law enforcement or security personnel to respond. So, the point of what we're talking about is how do we save lives? How do we posture ourselves to try to react appropriately to what ten, fifteen years ago was just unthinkable? We didn't have to think about this stuff. But today, you know, the headlines tell a different story. And so, we want to make sure that we've turned over every rock and looked at it and determined what policies are appropriate and what policies are not desirable. This is a process, this is a policy of a number of different policies and actions. And the purpose for this evening is to get feedback from the general public and anyone else that would like to speak so that we can take that into consideration as we deliberate what the best policy will be going forward. It also, the next step is to be able to share and socialize this with our employees so that they have a clear understanding of what the policy is designed to achieve and their potential role in that and whether they feel comfortable in that. So, there won't be a decision tonight. There won't be a decision probably for several months as we take this a very cautious and deliberative approach to reviewing these changes in our policies. But this is something that we need to consider, and the general consensus of the board has been that we are willing to consider this very seriously. So, at this time... Mr. Chairman, before you get there, could you call Ms. Petit up to tell us a little about what's involved in the training? Yes, sir. Deputy Petit.
Yes, sir.
If we could impose on you for just a moment to share with the public and us exactly what is involved in the training, not only for carrying a concealed weapon, but also the anticipated training that would be required of our county employees.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As far as concealed carry training, the state requires that a person attend eight hours of classroom plus mandatory firing on the range consistent of at least thirty rounds. And of the eight hours of classroom, at least two hours of that is supposed to be the legal update, the legal parts of when you can shoot, when you can't shoot, and the proper time to use a firearm. As far as what the county is going to require, that's something I believe is still up for discussion as to what exactly we're going to implement for the county employees that intend to carry concealed on county property. So, I don't have an answer for that, sir.
But you'll be involved in that design of that program?
Yes, sir. I know the sheriff is, supports all citizens that legally carry. So, yes, we'll be helping myself, and there's other firearms instructors at the sheriff's office, who I'm sure will be willing to help as well.
Any further questions?
Thank you for your help, Andy.
Yes, sir.
At this time, I will now formally open the public hearing. And the individuals who have signed up, I have two, but certainly anyone else that desires to be heard, this will be an opportunity. And please keep your comments within five minutes. I believe our timekeeper will be hitting the clock here. Okay, first off is Mr. David Lambert.
David Lambert, 252 Tobacco Farm Lane. And of course, you guys know me as the Director of Solid Waste here, county department head. I'm glad to hear tonight that you're giving this careful and cautious consideration. This is eases some concerns I've had. I approached this with much trepidation. I went back and forth on whether I wanted to speak tonight, and I just felt led to do it. I knew I wouldn't be happy with myself if I didn't. Just to let you know where I come from, I grew up on a farm in North Aridale, grew up hunting, I still hunt, I own guns. I'm very well-versed in gun safety. But my concerns are with this, I've never felt any threat from the public. I've always viewed the public as our customer, and I've encouraged our employees to treat them that way. In most situations, I've been able to de-escalate. And if I ever had one where I felt like I couldn't, at the end of the day, as one of my employees always says, it's just trash. It's already rotten when it got there, it's not going to get any worse. So, it's not worth me getting in a big fight about. You know, I'll, I'll say, okay, you know, I'm not going to be drawn into this. And I go on, and, you know, I may get a license plate and have to call the sheriff's department later. But my concern with this comes from the standpoint of employees. We've had a few situations that, that as a department head, I felt it could go one way or the other. I'm encouraged that you've got a plan for training. That makes me feel a lot better. But I always worry about the folks that a gun makes them feel a little bit more braver, a little bigger guy. I had a friend years ago, he said, well, I got my pistol in my pocket, I feel like a big man. And that always stuck with me. If you've got that little extra bit of courage, you may do something that you wouldn't do if you were your normal self. I'm concerned that some people may not have good judgment always. Sometimes people are impaired, some people may have something going on in their life. They could be on a medicine, a legal drug. We've been talking a lot about the opioid crisis. I'm not qualified to make a medical decision about an employee. I'm not qualified to say, this guy, something's going on in his head under the current HR policy. Anyway, I couldn't do that. Maybe there needs to be something in consideration where, I know we have our drug abuse, our drug awareness, substance awareness, I guess, policy, but maybe we really need to start training employees on that and really doing some intensive training where a department head or a frontline supervisor could say, hey, I know that Johnny's got a concealed carry permit, something's not right about him. You know, we need to do something about this. And then my biggest concern is with disciplinary policy, the way it's always been, myself, frontline supervisors, we're the ones that's having to deal with that employee. If it's got to the point where maybe they're going to be terminated, and that's a serious issue, you know, a person has a mortgage, they have kids and things. Some people, their job is who they are. So, you're taking something personal from them, and it can be pretty tough. So, maybe we need to look at how we handle those. Maybe that doesn't need to be done back in my office with just me and Teddy Bowler sitting there. Maybe we need a deputy standing outside and we do that. Or maybe we need to do it not in person. That sounds kind of, kind of chicken to do it this way, but maybe we need to do those things over the telephone now. You know, it's easy to say, well, you can't, you can't bring your weapon to this disciplinary action. Well, heck, they're figuring they're getting fired anyhow, so they're going to bring it with them. So, this is, this is my concern. I just want you to really give these things consideration because those guys like myself, we're the ones out on the front line. I know that society's changed. I watch the news. I see both sides of this. I just want you to look at it very, very carefully. And I appreciate the opportunity that the employees will have to give you some input later. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lambert. Appreciate your service and your department's service every day. Next, we have Ms. Robin Williams. If you please announce your address.
The name is Robin Williams. My address is 129 West Allison Street, Stevesville, North Carolina. And I'm very thankful for the opportunity to stand here tonight to address my concerns with the concealed weapons that's being proposed for employees. Being a former county employee of fifteen years, which I'm very thankful to have been able to serve this county for that length of time. As it relates to this, to this hearing and this policy, I realize that it is the policy of Aridale County to promote a safe environment for its employees. The burden, therefore, is on the county commissioners, not on the employees to protect themselves in the workplace. The workplace is a very stressful place, very stressful. And that being said, that being said, working in a stressful environment, having access to a concealed weapon, you never know what may happen. And I concur with everything that the previous person said. If an employee is given a negative evaluation and/or, and/or is considered for termination, that employee can very well use his or her concealed weapon against the employer, against the supervisor or anyone else in the office. Also, having a concealed weapon, I feel employees are not, what if the employees get into a disagreement with one another over a situation, whatever it may be? There again, someone could go and get their weapon out and use it in the workplace. People take medicine, which promotes all types of behaviors. So, having a gun in the workplace is not a safe, is not the right thing to do. In a person's home, that's your home, you can have whatever weapon you want because that is your home and you have the right to protect your home. But when it comes to employment, it's up to the county commissioners, it's up to, it's up to the, for you to find an alternative way to protect the employees. And a way that that can be done is, I know that we have, you have implemented FOBs, you have, we have cameras, and we also have security guard. Well, I realize some of the buildings are old. Well, that means that we need to spend money to put in a, to put in, to put in a metal detector system so that anyone coming in, going into the building, we will know if they have arms on them or not. But to give, to put that burden on the employee is not, in my opinion, is not the best thing to do. That is a situation waiting for, that's an opening, opening the Pandora box. We're not living in the wild, wild west, we're living in the United States. And I realize that we have had a lot of mass killings, but that still doesn't put the burden back on the employee. It's up to the commissioners to find an alternative solution to protect the employees. Again, we work under, employees work in a very stressful environment, dealing with the public, and they should not have to, they should not have to protect themselves in the workplace as it relates to carrying a concealed weapon. You can also look at hiring professionals, security guards or a police officer to be in the building to, to protect the employees while they are at work. The other thing is, it states that an employee must remove and take the handgun with them when leaving the Aridale County facilities. Sometimes you may forget trying to get out of the office quickly. You may forget and leave it behind, or you may, something, you may drop it. To me, it's just, that's not the answer. That is not the answer. And I respectfully request that the commissioners look for another solution, an alternative solution to protecting the employees in the workplace. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I would inquire if there is anyone else that would like to be heard at this particular time. Hearing none? Okay, well. Okay, well.
I'm Charles Stevens. I live at 144 Pinnacle Lane in Mooresville. And I didn't come out in here ready to say anything, but listening, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. It really sounds like you got the best interest of the county employees in trying to come up with this, but it sounds like we're trying to do it on the cheap. I mean, they'll never, you'll never be able to get a random employee and give him a little bit of training and have him be able to deal with an active shooter like a police officer would, and I don't think that's the way to go about it. I'm a taxpayer, I'd be happy to pay a little more taxes if it takes, if that's what it takes. And the other, and I understand it's not a level playing field, because in this county, you can, or in state, you can carry a gun anywhere, but can we not pick some buildings and start and try to prohibit guns in the building? I mean, then it levels things out. So anyway, I didn't have much to say, but I just wanted you to know, there's other people who are definitely against this.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to be heard? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for this evening. Is there any other comment, or?
I'd just like to address, you know, as part of the general government task force, you know, we did look at making sure that, as part of David's comments, that, you know, any kind of disciplinary hearings, the employee cannot carry weapons. But have to keep in mind, in real society, I've got a 30-year law enforcement background, you know, the laws are out there for, where you can't drive drunk, people do it every day. The laws are out there where you can't speed, people choose to do that. The fact that we have a sign on a building that says you can't carry concealed weapons or any weapons is not going to prevent someone that has intent to do someone harm within a building from doing that. What this is a consideration of is to allow the employees inside with as best training possible to defend themselves. Police officers, we can have security officers at every entrance. The first people typically taken out in an active shooter situation is your armed police or security guards. So we just want to provide the potential for employees if they choose. The lady mentioned the burden on employees, it's not a burden in my view, they don't have to do it. It's all, it would be by choice through additional training, it's not mandatory. So, you know, from my seat, is giving the employee the opportunity to defend themselves, you know, the Second Amendment is part of the Constitution. So in my view, looking at it as a conservative, if you deny someone the right to keep and bear arms just because they're at work, you could also, on the other side of that liability, be preventing them from defending themselves. So I just wanted us to look at it, and we're looking at it objectively, taking in consideration all of those. We don't take any of the comments lightly. We want our employees, like David and others, to give us honest feedback, because there are going to be situations, whether we do this or not, that are going to give people pause, that are going to have people concerned, and maybe some of the things we look at as part of our task force is grievances and things, or disciplinary actions may need to take place at HR, or some of those things. That's why we want our employees to give us the feedback that we are asking for, and we encourage them to do that, because we are not going to shun on you for doing that, we want to hear your honest feedback. But I just wanted to say those things, that none of this is going to be burdened and forced on anybody, we're not taking it lightly, we're not in a rush. So I just wanted to make those comments and thank those people that did speak, and I've heard lots and lots of others that, you know, are for this policy that couldn't be here. So I just wanted to say that and look forward to hearing from our employees and other people in the community once they know we're considering this.
Okay. Any comments? Well, just to sum things up, our next step is to discuss this in depth with our employees, because they're the ones that are directly and most immediately impacted by any choices that we make. And so that sense of where our employees are is really going to guide what our decision, I believe, is ultimately going to be. We just want to make sure that in the future, if, God forbid, there was some mass shooting in one of our offices, that one of the gentlemen in the press isn't going to be there with a microphone in front of us and saying, "Well, what could you have done to prevent that?" Or have an individual say, "You know, if I had had something to defend myself with, or defend the other people in my office with, these casualties may not have occurred." We want to try to avoid that. If we can avoid it some other way that's effective, then we are all ears. But we want our employees and our citizens to understand that we are going to do whatever we can to provide the best, safest, securest environment that we can, within balancing out all these different considerations, to include the costs. And there can be no environment that's 100% safe. But we're dealing with essentially two groups of people here. One are people, one are folks that, neither of whom are going to read a sign and obey a sign, because they're out to break the law, either intentionally or because they are in an alternate reality. And so for those that intentionally desire to inflict a mass casualty, they are very careful about their choice of targets. And when they're choosing targets, they choose the targets that are least able to defend themselves, or least able to protect themselves. So we may have done everything we need to do to provide that level of security that, you know, people will look at us and say, "Maybe it's not worth trying to, you know, chew on that porcupine, maybe we need to go someplace else." Because that's what they'll do, they're going to do something. For the individuals who have a mental incapacity or a mental illness, that, where they are not rational, they're going to make choices that we can't control, and that perhaps they can't control. But we can try to limit the damage that they inflict. So this is a balancing process, and the process itself will go on for, I'm sure, weeks and months as we get feedback and have a dialogue to figure out what's going to be the best approach for Aridale County and our citizens and our employees. So I want to thank everyone who shared their opinions this evening, they're valued and very valuable. And that being said, we'll now, I did close the public hearing. Okay. Want to move on to our next item, which are the administrative matters that we discussed at our pre-agenda meeting, which are appropriate for our consent agenda, and I would ask Mr. Smith to please summarize those items that are appropriate for a consent motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item, 8.1 is a request from ICATS, that's the Aridale County Area Transit System or Transportation System, to call for a public hearing on November 7th, 2017, to seek input about a grant application for, from the Federal Transit Administration. Item 8.2, a request from the Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 12 to appropriate lease proceeds for technology improvements. Item 8.3 is a request from Building Standards for approval and award of a sole-source purchase contract with Selectron to acquire an upgrade to its interactive voice response software. Item 8.4 was pulled from the consent agenda. Item 8.5, a request for approval of the September refunds and releases, and 8.6, a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of the minutes for the October 3rd, 2017 meeting.
Is there any further discussion or comment on the items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Howe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We'll now circle back to item 8.4, which is a request from Planning and Development to consider an application to utilize the high-density option to allow development of an office warehouse building. And Mr. Matthew Todd, if you will please enlighten us.
This is a request to increase the impervious coverage from 24%, which is allowed in the watershed by right, up to 50%. This is brought on by the applicant who's proposing to do an office warehouse facility. The proposal, the way we've seen it, should not have a negative impact on the traffic above anything else that would already be permitted in that zoning district. The property's been zoned general business since 1997, and has been vacant since then. In order to get the high density, it does require approval through this board, and if it is granted, it does, there are next steps involved regards to the measures put in place to manage the stormwater that's generated from the higher impervious coverage. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions on this one.
Mr. Todd, this is a proposed warehouse, is it not, and an office?
Correct.
It is not a mini warehouse complex?
No, not a mini warehouse.
So the anticipated traffic would be relatively light?
Yes, based on the plan.
Mr. Chairman, this particular piece of legislation that comes before us this evening, I think we have to look at, it has been vacant, it has been zoned GB since 97, it has been vacant for that length of time, it is permitted by right for 24% impervious. What we're being asked this evening to decide is to whether to allow high density. And when I first looked at this, I had a little bit of heartburn, because the fact that it shows that the traffic count on that road is way over at this particular point. We understand that Highway 150, River Highway, is being dealt with by the state as we speak. Plans are being drawn and funds are being acquired to fix this problem on Highway 150 West. But as we look at it, I guess the question that is asked is, what can we put in here that will cause the least amount of trip generations? What can cause the least amount of traffic? And I believe this particular plan presented to us this evening is the plan that will cause the least amount of traffic burden on that road already. So with that said, I would move that we approve this high-density option.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles to approve the high-density option. Any further comment? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Todd. Okay, we have one announcement under item 10 of, or item 9, rather, of a vacancy on our Board of Equalization and Review. Mr. Tom Connolly Jr. has submitted a letter of resignation because he's moving to another county. The Board, however, will not be meeting for some period of time, and another appointment is not immediately necessary. We've gone to, instead of having just boards pop up different times of the year, we've gone to at least a semi-annual or annual appointment process as a group, and so this will go into that pot the next time around. So there's no action to take on the matter this evening. But we would encourage people to, who would like to serve, to file an application with the county. You can find that application form on the county website. Item 10, appointments to Boards and Commissions. We have one appointment that is open. A nominee, Mr. Brandon Douglas, has been nominated by the Executive Director, David Hollers, of the Central Indiana Workforce Development Board to fill a position. Is there a motion?
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Norman to appoint Brandon Douglas. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Is there any unfinished business to come before the Board? Hearing none? This is, for all the public hearings, this is also a public comment opportunity for anyone who would like to be heard on virtually any subject. I do not see that anyone has signed up for the public comment period, but I would inquire of the audience if there's anyone that'd like to be heard. Forever, hold your peace, going once, going twice, okay? We will then move on, no reason to open that public comment period. New business to come before the Commission? Hearing none? Mr. Smith, if you could render the county manager's report.
Not much to report tonight, Mr. Chairman, just two reminders. On Thursday of this week, at 10 o'clock, we're going to have the jail groundbreaking, and that's going to be in the area that has been cordoned off by the contractors, so you will get special access to the inaccessible area for that morning. There is, it's going to be an active worksite, so we have our first major project going on that day. There is going to be some stormwater improvements taking place, where Constitution will be shut down and dug up, so it's actually, they're going to stop work just for us to get this done, and then we'll be able to move on. On October 30th, which is a Monday, at 11 o'clock, we'll have the Public Safety Complex grand opening, and that will just be out at the site, there'll be more room to move around over there. So glad to answer any questions that you have, pretty simple tonight.
Hard hats and glasses, both?
Hard hats, yes. You might want to just bring them both, just in case our project manager jumps on us and makes us put them on.
Mr. Slavy ordered them, and he said we had to wear them.
Okay.
And just to be clear, this is a groundbreaking at the jail and not a jailbreak.
That's right.
And, you know, this is a culmination, or the beginning, really, of the actual physical moving of dirt on two projects that have been consuming our staff and Commission's attention for the last two and a half to three years. And it takes a while to bring these projects to fruition by the time you develop the vision and the concept, and develop the financing tools to achieve your goals, and then the multiple negotiations necessary to bring the project in on time and on budget. And so we want to thank all the staff that's worked to bring us to this point, and we're looking forward to the contractors moving the dirt and getting both buildings under roof before it's inclement weather, so they can get a lot of work done and be on time. So.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing?
Sure.
I just thought about it. As I'm out and about, there are various places I go by and check on my routes throughout town. One of them is the old Davis Hospital site. There is no longer a building on the Davis Hospital site. I never thought the.
Amen.
A rubble still, but no longer a standing building.
Well, that's been a, another process that unfortunately people aren't really aware of the discussions and the negotiations and the issues that had to be dealt with to be able to deal with a private landowner who had held that property for many years, to be able to bring that to a satisfactory resolution. You know, if it'd been easy to do, it would have been done 20 years ago, so.
But having said that, though, when I see people out in the community, from that community, they thank our Board, Mitchell City Estates, for the efforts to finally make the decision to clean that up. It was an investment for their communities, and they do appreciate it. People do make those comments when I see them.
Well, I think when the Mitchell College has finished their health services building, and it's sitting up on the hill, and you see that Mitchell College now has a significant footprint to be able to expand in the future to meet the needs of Aridale County's citizens, that it is indeed going to be not only a that it is indeed going to be not only an investment, but a process that is worth the end result. So that being said, any further business to come before the Commission? All hearts free? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We adjourn.